And Carl will be joining us after this interview. So why don't we get started here first? And we'll start off first with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I ask everybody, please rise. Find a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. So at this time, we're going to have interviews for the head custodian position. And Dan?
Yes.
Daniel, Dan, does it matter which?
It doesn't matter, whatever you're comfortable with.
Mr. Storrs, we're going to kick you to the waiting room while we take the first applicant, and then we'll call you back in for the second one. Is that okay with you?
That's fine, thank you.
All right. And if I mess this up, call back. No, I'm just kidding, I think I got this figured out. Okay. I think I did that. Hello Hillary, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Okay. So now we're going to do this. See if we can't figure this all out. No, maybe we can't.
Chairman.
Yes.
I think you need to introduce everybody.
Yep. Getting to that, I was trying to make sure we're all set. Okay, Hillary, let me go through you. I'm Doug Moglen. And you know Russ Fox and Joe Didi.
Good evening.
Comprises the rest of the Select Board. And we are going to ask you one, two, three, four questions tonight.
Okay.
And then we are going to conduct the remainder of our interviews. And we may or may not make a decision on this tonight.
Okay.
But we will be back in touch with you forthwith. Okay. So we'll kind of go round robin. And why don't we have, let's see. Joe, why don't you? Joe, you there?
Yes, sir.
All right. Why don't you take the first question for Hillary?
All right. So my first question is, what experience have you had supervising others?
The experience that I've had supervising others has been at my current job, where I have five people on my staff who I train and I supervise. In addition to my current supervisor, if she is not there, I supervise them. Make sure all of their work's getting done. I lead by example to make sure that everything that's required of us is getting done for the day. And, you know, I train them from the moment they come in the door and they learn everything that they need to learn in order to be successful where I currently work.
Thank you. Do you want the clerk next?
Mr. Fox?
He was your chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman. Hillary, how would you control drama in different personalities that you would be in charge of?
How I would control that is by speaking with the individuals who are having issues and making sure that, you know, things are not getting escalated. I would report any issues to my supervisor, who if I were hired for the job would be Bob Johnson. And I would definitely want to make sure that things are not elevated. And, you know, things sometimes do happen at a work setting. But I would definitely control that by making sure that people are working as a team and together. And, you know, I do have pretty good, strong communication and customer service skills. And I currently do deal with challenges sometimes at my job with the current employees there. And again, I would just explain to them how we should act in our job as professionals. And get backup if I do need backup as far as speaking with my supervisor as well.
Thank you. How flexible are you with your time in terms of weekend events, snow removal, and other emergencies?
Oh, I'm absolutely very flexible. I have done those in the past. Currently, my schedule is completely open. I work all sorts of hours. I have done definite snow removal at my current job and when I was a custodian at the town hall before. I definitely have done all sorts of events as far as the art show. Knowing there has to be weekend availability nights. If somebody gets sick or calls out, I definitely have complete open flexibility.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Yeah. Zoom is not doing well today, is it? What is your management style?
My personal management style is by leading from the front. I like to be an example to my team. So when instructing them, I like to show them exactly what needs to get done. And then, you know, show them examples of how I do things. And then I would then watch them in them to make sure that they're developing the correct strategies in order to be successful.
Thank you.
Hillary, do you have anything that you would like to add or say before we conclude this part of the process?
I was just going to ask what the process from this point would be, but you had already said that in the forefront. So as of this time, I do not. I think all my questions have been answered.
Great. All right, is there, so you have no additional questions for us at this time?
Um.
You've seen the job description and the, all the relevant documents and so on and so forth?
Oh, well, I definitely have looked over the job description. I feel that I definitely fit the job description. I've done all the, everything except for learning the town budget and doing purchase orders and work orders. But I do currently do those things at my current job. But really, as far as questions about it, if I were to become employed with the town of Southwick, at that point, I would then go over that information.
Great. Alrighty. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And like I said, I don't know if we're going to make a decision tonight. It'll probably come back up under routine business tonight, but I'm not sure if we're going to make a decision tonight or not.
I understand that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm going to go let Mr. Storrs back in. And then we'll go from there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dan, are you back?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right. How was the waiting room? Was it comfortable? Temperature was okay?
Yeah.
Fantastic. All right, well, let me introduce you to the rest of the Board of Selectmen. I'm Doug Moglen. And we have Vice Chairman Joe Didi and Russell Fox. Hopefully, you can see them on your screen. And there's some other guests in attendance as well. But those are the three people that are going to be asking you a series of one, two, three, four questions. And we're going to then ask if you have any information that you want to add. And I don't know if we're going to make a decision tonight. It'll probably come back up under routine business for us to discuss further. But we may or may not make a decision tonight as to how we're going to move forward. Is that okay with you?
I'm sorry you got cut out, and then it just came back on again. I lost you.
Was that like the part between good afternoon and have a good day, or?
You asked if I was comfortable, and then everybody smiled and the screen froze, and you were kind of breaking up. And then the screen went blank, and then it came back up again.
Fantastic. The beauty of Zoom. Okay, so let me introduce ourselves again. I'm Doug Moglen, Vice Chairman Joe Didi and Russell Fox. We're going to be asking you a series of four or five questions. And.
Nice to meet all of you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
And after the questions, you'll have an opportunity, if there's anything you want to add or if you have any questions that you want to ask us.
Okay.
And then probably during the meeting later on tonight, we're going to have this come back up for discussion. And we may or may not make a decision tonight on this particular issue.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Yep. It's a big decision, so I'm not expecting you to make a decision right now.
Absolutely.
Okay. So the first question, if any of these questions you don't hear completely, just ask us to repeat it.
Okay.
Because the Zoom is cutting in and out, and I would hate for you not to hear the whole question. And I don't want a long answer being a wrong answer, so.
Okay.
Okay. What experience have you had supervising others?
For the last, oh, I'd say 20 years. I started out, my first supervisor job was out in Indiana. I managed a warehouse for a company called E-Bake Products. It was a co-packer for Pillsbury. And we also packaged Pepperidge Farm crackers. And I managed a warehouse, two shifts of eight people each. After that, I left and I came. And since then, I've been working. I'm sorry?
Oh, you're fading in and out again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's always when we try to do these interviews that Zoom goes south.
I apologize.
That's all right.
My most recent, my most recent job, I was supervising anywhere from three to eight technicians that were on the road. The company built electron beam welders, and we serviced machinery all over the US, Singapore, Germany, and Brazil. And I was in charge of coordinating them, not only getting them on the job, but also with the customers quoting them and invoicing them at the end of the job.
Thank you.
Dan, how would you control drama in different personalities that you would be in charge of?
Um. I'm sorry, could you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
Okay. How would you control drama in different personalities that you would be in charge of?
I guess what I would do is, you know, that's, you know, I've worked with that same type of people with my position, in my position. And, you know, as far as drama, I've talked to the individuals. I've also, you know, got their opinion on how they're comfortable, what's making the, you know, what's causing drama. And then resolving the issues to where there's a comfortable workplace for everybody. To be honest, I've never had any issues with any of the staff that I've had that excelled the drama. If there was something, I addressed it right away. And we were able to talk through it and work it out, so.
Good.
Great. How flexible are you with your time in terms of weekend events, snow removal, and other emergencies?
I have open availability, anytime, anywhere, whatever you need, I'm available.
What is your management style?
I've never been asked that before. I'm not quite sure about the question. I'm sorry.
I am not either. I didn't write it. So what is your management style? Yeah, I don't know. Do you hide in a corner? Do you cry?
No, actually, I'm.
Are you hands-on?
No, I'm definitely.
Stole yourself for the next two and a half minutes.
I'm hands-on. I'm definitely a people person. I always like to get the input of my employees as well as, you know, my other coworkers. And especially management, you know? If they, if there's some better route that, you know, some better ideas that they have, I try to incorporate them with how I'm working. I'm very laid back, very easy to get along with. I've never had issues with anybody. Actually, I've been told I'm too personable, so.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan, do you have any questions that, for us at this time?
No, I don't. I'm just happy to have this opportunity to make it this far and to, you know, possibly get this position. I've lived in Southwick for 15 years and graduated from Granby High School. I'm familiar with the area. And it's just nice to know that I have an opportunity to give back to the town.
Well, thank you very much. Like I said, have you read over the job description and the handbook and all of that stuff?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right. Like I said, I don't know that we're going to make a decision this evening or if we're going to discuss it under routine business as we move through a pretty heavy agenda tonight. So we're going to have to see where this ends up.
Okay. Thank you for your time. It was a pleasure meeting all of you. And you all have a great evening.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to let Carl in. Against my better judgment. Okay, we got a couple of minutes till we have Jim Mazick on. Somebody's got some background noise on too. So if you're, if you got that background noise, if you could go on mute, that'd be great.
Should I be staying with the video or should I just?
Totally up to you. You're welcome to stay and watch your government in motion here or whatever your pleasure is, sir.
Sure. I'll sit.
All right, so be quiet.
Doug, Jim is here.
Okay. He's on at 5:50. So we still got a couple of minutes.
Okay.
So why don't we? Public comments is after. We have a, I can cover the payroll warrant. Date number 2027 dated 6/22 in the amount of $242,997.72. And an INS-REF special payroll warrant from June 24th in the amount of $1,645.75. And payables warrant number 2101B dated 7/1 in the amount of $675,859.4. And the minutes.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On order, I have another payroll warrant to announce. Number 2101 dated 7/6/2020 in the amount of $265,743.18.
Very good. Thank you. And has everyone reviewed the minutes of June 23rd?
Yes.
Joe?
Sure. We get sued, we get sued. That's been my motto all along, so.
Okay. Would someone like to make a?
I'll make a motion for those.
Motion for those minutes? Is there a second?
Russ Fox will second.
Okay. It's a roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Fox, aye.
Great. And lastly, why don't we just knock off the executive session minutes of 6/23 as well?
I'll make that motion.
Russ Fox will second it.
Great. Roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Aye.
Great. And there was, just to be clear for the record on the minutes, 6/23, is that the one where we had the split meeting? Where we went into executives, opened an executive and then moved into executive?
Right. There were two sets. There was an open session, one and two.
Correct. So just to be clear, that our motion and vote was for both sets of those minutes of 6/23?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. Mr. Mazick?
Yes, sir. How are you?
Oh, great. How are you?
Good. We all set?
We are. The floor is yours. I just have to grab my packet.
Sure. Well, gentlemen, good to see all you board members. And Cindy, you look like you're on top of the world there.
So this is, can you hear me fine?
Absolutely.
Yes, I can.
Okay. So this is essentially, you know, somewhat a brief summary of the ADA self-help and transition plan that was recently completed for the town. For those of you who don't know, and Carl, you probably, and Randy too, both heard kind of this, well, some of this Department meeting many, many, many months ago. The American with Disabilities Act was signed into law back in July of 1990 by then-President George H. Bush. The ADA is a civil rights law, unlike 521 CMR, which governs state regs for accessibility compliance. So really, it's tended to be that there's equal access to programs and services to those with both mental and physical impairments. There are five different titles under the ADA. You are governed and bound by two. Basically, Title I, which deals with employment. And then Title II, which really deals with local government. So there were regs that were put in effect in 1990 and then in 2008. And then there are new standards issued in 2010 and effective in 2012. Standards are now about yay, thick. And apart from the federal standards, I mentioned 521 CMR. That's a specialized section of the state building code. That also deals with accessibility compliance. But that is only triggered, it doesn't deal with civil rights, doesn't deal with equal access based upon discrimination. It is triggered by, is a building code. It's triggered by construction. So it depends upon if, you know, the value of the building, how much work is being done as compared to the value and then the amount of work with, what's triggered under 521 CMR. So under, under the ADA, and I'll get back to those two different standards in a few minutes. Under the ADA, you're looking at what's considered a self-evaluation. And then there's a transition plan. The self-evaluation is really looking at various policies, procedures, programs that the town has or municipality has in place and whether it's compliant with the American with Disabilities Act. And in doing this, there's really 10 areas that are looked at. In your case, just kind of briefly look at a couple of some ways. You have an executive, somebody you have to support. One of the first things, okay, is whether or not you have a commission on disability. This is actually under Mass General Law. And, you know, you don't. And one of the recommendations that I have is, obviously, if you adopt that under Mass General Law and then you establish that commission on disability, hopefully to help you move forward on some of the aspects of, you know, the rest of the self-evaluation and transition plan. Another thing we look at, or look at is the ADA coordinator, which you do have one. However, it's not found anywhere on the town's website in your annual report. Any postings that your chief administrative officer, Carl, is your ADA coordinator. So I've got some comments on that. Again, there is required under ADA, we have a public notification of non-discrimination policies. Typically, that's posted in the town hall, posted on the website. It doesn't appear that's the case, at least I could find when I was in town hall or looking at the website. But again, I have a sample provided, a public notification, and also some comments that are included on that. Your grievance, you have one, but there's a few little glitches in it. It's essentially a three-level system. Level one is your chief administrative officer. Level two is your ADA coordinator. Level three is your Board of Select. Unfortunately, your CAO and your ADA coordinator are one and the same. So it needs to be basically modified to a level-two process. I have a sample of that in the document as well. There is also looking at policy and procedures that you would have in place between for employment or taking various actions and reviewing survey forms that were distributed, but other documents are received. There's some inconsistency among departments. Carl has indicated you have counsel working on a number of things, including job descriptions. So that's been highlighted. And presumably, then, if your counsel.
Yeah. We gave a copy of this report.
You did? Good. So another thing is reasonable accommodations. That falls under Title II. And, you know, job descriptions addressing that. I did provide a sample of reasonable accommodations policy in the document. But things in terms of folks being aware of when they hire, how they address reasonable accommodations in the hiring process, but also they hire, they address reasonable accommodations in once folks are employed. Also commentary on certain types of language for job descriptions. So for example, if you're having, you're interviewing to me, if you have a job listed, and it could be a desk job. And, but might require some walking. So typically, folks use the word stand or sit. So many, so much time per day or walking. And I could be in a wheelchair. I could be fully qualified for the position. I don't get the position. And I could go back to the town and say, well, listen, you have your job description. That I, you know, have to stand or sit. I have to walk. And that could be problematic for this, for the town. So using such language as remain in a stationary position, move or traverse. So the language you can use, which is much more general and in the long run could protect you from any action taken from potential discrimination. Another thing looked at on the self-help piece is maintenance. So how is the town maintaining basic physical features and ways to access services? And again, most of this is detailed in the report itself on the building assessments. But there are simple things, which, you know, a lot of the bathroom stalls entered into various buildings. So under ADA and 521 CMR, stall doors also be self-closing. Pressure opening, self-close. Lots of times over time, those self-closing mechanisms fail, need be adjusted. Oftentimes, there are features that are missing on the stall door. I mean, to you and I, this is very simple. But for a person in a wheelchair, this is problematic. So a pull device on the inside of a stall door is broken, it's not replaced. Well, now I've got to go underneath. My stall door is not closing. I get to reach underneath and close the door. That's a problem. Bathroom sinks under ADA, if it's self-measured, it need be open for 10 seconds. A lot of them, they're open for two seconds a day. Little adjustments like that. Curb ramps, you know, accumulation debris in the curb ramp. So those are things that are identified in the report in detail, but also mentioned in the self-help piece as well. So there's a lot of things, you know, I'm not going to go all into self-help piece. So those are part of looking at how you're compliant with your policy procedures. The other, the next really part of it goes into your assessment of buildings themselves. And that's your transition plan. So on the transition plan, I actually go into every building and look at from the minute you go into a facility and you're in the parking lot. And you assess the parking, accessible route, the size of the spaces, the slopes, running slopes, cross slopes as you're going into a building. Are there any abrupt changes in the level surface going into the facility itself? One quarter inch is the max on route of travel. A half inch beveled as you get into the threshold doorway. The operating force of the door, the closing speeds of the door. The, the, the distance on the side where the pull side is on the door. If it's a ramp, the slopes on the ramp, the heights of the railings, extensions on the railings, whether edge protection is all these things. And you go through the building and looking at everything. Hallways, if there's protective objects, I can't pick up a cave detection. Are my water fountains, are they high-low? Are they at the right height for near clearance? My meeting table in the selectmen's room, do I have any clearance in Clearwood? Again, the different features on the bathrooms, on the assembly areas. So every single building is looked at in very detail. And looked at from both a standpoint of the ADA standards and then the standards under 521 CMR. Unfortunately, you would hope and think that they would be the same, but they're not. They're similar in most cases, but in many cases, they are different. So if you go through your report, and I'm assuming you might, you would have a copy of those or have seen those, I always apply the stricter of the two. Now, again, you have to recognize that on these plans, they're set up in a way that they're based to adhere to the current standard. And if you read the full report, it talks about the safe harbor. There's exceptions under historical considerations. There's exceptions under other cost provisions. And I talk about that. But if you look at each individual building, we'll talk about the higher standard and then give some options, what might be in place, put in place as a result of that. So there's also looking at in some areas. So there's also looking at in some areas, reasonable accommodations. So for example, your police fire DPW, there's certain areas which are not technically compliant. 521 CMR does not govern employee workspaces at the present time. Is this, there's a draft out there that may come into place in a few years. Under ADA, employee workspaces are governed. However, there are areas which if you have a certain position as DPW, police buyer, you must have meet certain physical requirements to maintain that position. So in those cases, I will, I address them potential modifications, but only, but no, they'll only be required to be made as a result of reasonable accommodation. So you wouldn't necessarily have to make a shower in a DPW locker room accessible unless you know, 10 years from now, everyone has bionic arms, bionic legs and they can, you know, he can do whatever. Because technically, you know, Randy's people have to have certain, do certain things in an able bodied manner, which if they were, they would, they have to be able to, you know, use equipment and you know, climb and do other things and lift, which if someone had a disability or in a wheelchair, they could not. So therefore they would not be using those those areas such as the showers and lockers. Where that comes into play definitely if you have dispatch police, civilian dispatch police and you have bathrooms used by those folks, then those have to be made accessible. If you have a police or fire, which is also firefighters or EMTs or police officers manning both the dispatch as well as providing the service out in the field, again, they must meet certain physical requirements. And therefore unless a reasonable accommodation required, then those areas have to be modified. That's spelled out in detail in your plan. The way it's it's laid out, essentially there is a general description of each building facility. I provide a photo and then there is a general description of what the obstacles are, which limit or restrict access. Then it follows by very detailed table breakdown of what the actual physical constraint is and a specific site reference to the 2010 standards, which you can go into the manual and see what that is requirements and the same under 521 CMR. And then I would, I include a very specific action, exactly what needs to be done. So if you need to, you know, raise a grab bar by so many inches or have to be set so far back from the wall, if the slope is a certain level or a parking space is a certain width, it needs to be a different width, that is specifically laid out what exactly needs to be done. And then in terms of prioritization, typically I look at prioritization, number one is get into a facility or a building. Two would be actually accessing a good or a service within that building. Three would be the bathrooms, access in the bathrooms and then four would be anything else that doesn't fall under that. I assign a feasibility rating. Feasibility, one would be, you know, actually Cindy or Carl could do this. Let's say there's a protruding object and protruding object is something that extends more than four inches in the accessible route at a height of 27 to 80 inches. But let's say there's a sign for, I'll just say the assessments office, it's about 75 inches off the finished floor and it extends up to the hallway. So that's protruding object because if I am sight impaired and I have cane, cane detection can't pick that up and I could potentially walk into that and, and you know, cause an injury to my eye or my head or whatever. So a simple thing we'd be doing is placing a fixed object. It could be a chair, it could be a little table that anyone, you know, Carl or Cindy could put there and bang, that solves the problem because that cane or that fixed on that table, now my cane can pick that up and I will go around that protruding object hanging up off the wall. Number two would be feasibility would be something like a door, a doorknob, which is non compliant, changed to a door lever. So it could be your maintenance personnel, maybe from DPW, someone could actually quickly change out that hardware on the door. Our three is a little more complicated would be, it's going to involve some sort of construction technique or requirement. It could be plumbing related, it could be ramp related, it could be stair related. It might result in hiring a contractor to do that. And four is the highest level, which essentially you might need to enter an architect to actually formally design something or couple of the design solution and then hire a contractor to I try to put a timeframe on things. And again, this, the plan is such, you can make any, it's a, we have a Word doc version, you can make any changes on it. Immediate, near, a long term, immediate within the next two years, near, probably three years or so, three to four, and then long term, maybe five, six, seven, eight years old. And then I try to put a rough course and I use that based on past experience with my previous hat on, using other examples by either calling folks up that I know have done similar work or just doing some online research and getting prices and then doing, you know, unit quantities, whatever, and running out the numbers. So you have a very detailed assessment for each property in town. You know, there are, there are a lot of things, a lot of buildings, some are heavy, a high cost items, some are not. You know, you really need to go through and see what you would want to prioritize, what things you can address immediately and what things maybe working with Carl and some sort of a capital plan for dress or applying for grants in the future. You can apply for both Mass Office of Disability Grants for construction improvements and you can apply for CWBG funds for construction improvement. So that's kind of in the summary, I didn't go into a lot of detail. If you have questions, I can add to them or any other comments.
Well, it's just, it's important to note that the the town secured a grant to undertake this self evaluation ADA transition plan. So we did an application through Mass Office of Disability, received a grant for over $18,000 last fall and we commissioned this report through Jim's consulting company because of his vast experience with code issues and all the other experience he had with the regional planning agency doing helping rehab. So the next step we'll be looking at is matching this against some of what Ty and Bond identified in their building evaluation report for all our buildings that was commissioned last year. And then to probably continue on with some of Jim's services to start chipping away at some of these issues that can be done for small dollars as we only have what's available within our budget document that was approved because generally we try to carry money for ADA issues each year. And I, of course, the board knows this year we had to defer a lot of those things because of the the budget process, COVID-19 and the lack of revenues coming in a timely manner from the Commonwealth. So we will be going forward with some of these issues and Jim will be continuing to partner with us to implement some of the, some of the items that we can do for the, you know, upfront, timely and for low dollars.
Jim, thank you very much. It looks like this is a very comprehensive report. It looks like we have, you know, a decent amount of work to do and some things are low hanging fruit, but others are going to take some additional planning and resource in order for us to undertake. But you know, it certainly was enlightening to get this study back and, you know, try to understand some of it. What is the threshold for, is it the same for public sector it is for private sector? If you have, say, a big ticket construction project going on that might trigger compliance activity on the rest of the facility?
Yeah, so it's different on, again, you're governed by, I said, Title One and Two. The other, other entities are governed under different titles under ADA. So there's ADA and 521. So let's say, so you don't follow it. So a, like a mall, a mall or a store falls under a different title. Or I had, I had a community I worked with in the clear years back, which had a private property, to me, public property, they leased to private entities. So that fell kind of quasi under two different titles under ADA. So there's, they do fall under, they would fall under the standards, correct, yes, they would. Under 521 CMR, everyone falls under the same standards, public or private. And but it is also still dictated by whether you're triggered by the thresholds of the value of the building, the amount of the work and a percent versus the value and that sort of. But yes, they're all treated essentially equally. There is a difference under churches, religious institutions, there are exemptions under that, but most part, yeah, private, public or similar.
Right, right. Historical buildings too.
Yeah, historical, there are, there are waivers processed for that, there are exemptions. Start to go through them. Again, I just finished up a plan for the front of Berlin and one of the buildings that they had was an old building and they had to go through the process for a number of waivers was, it was a big addition for accessibility. So they did get most of the waivers, a couple they didn't, but they were minor, but they didn't get most waivers because it was, that building was on the, it was a single building on the national register. So there are options.
Yeah, that's why, Jim, I see that you pointed out the north side of this building where we already do have a sloped entrance in the front, but on the north side we have stairs. So that would be something that we would have to pursue a variance for. I know at one time the town planner was looking at an estimate and it was like over 100,000 just to put a rampway on that side of the building.
Yeah, the big killer on that is the railings. Railings right now are, I think, about 135 millennial foot near peers, that's 370 millennial foot times how many feet and right there you're talking 30, $35,000 just in your railings. And that's, you know, that does include the concrete or however you're doing it.
Right. Yeah, and on that side of the building, we have a bulkhead that comes out too. So we have to be really careful about trying to figure out where we would put a slope and a return.
So the other thing, what some towns have done, cities or towns work with again, if they've gone, if they've used it just as an egress and again, I can't, you know, so if there's other means of access into a building and one could, they have successfully applied for egress only, not for access. And in some cases, MOD has granted that, I mean, I mean, the access board has granted that. So there are options. But you have to look at, you know, again, all your ways in and out.
So what I would be looking for is, is a commitment for the, from the board for me to continue to partner with Jim and his firm to chip away at the low hanging fruit, as Doug called it, on some of these issues and just continue, you know, moving into the future to be ready for the things that will take more dollars. And as well as possibly pursuing some grants for some of these other projects to happen. So if the board is committed to doing that, then Jim and I will do that now that Jim is retired from his other job at the regional planning agency.
Yeah, my wife was ready to kill me between working there and still like 25, 30 hours a week and I've got five different contracts now statewide doing this stuff and oh my God, she was ready to kill me. So thank God that's over.
Um, pleasure of the board. I mean, I don't see any objection from my perspective. Russ, Joe?
I thought, I didn't know I was muted. What funds do we have available to handle some of that small fruit?
Well, you have repair and maintenance dollars. You also have your hired service account for some of Jim's time. And then there may be stuff that just, like you said, makes sense to just put a table somewhere. Like I looked at something in Randy's building, how it's, something sticks out off the wall and if they would have just put a little, an end below it, then that would pick up on the stick that Jim was talking about where people that have vision impaired needed. So just, these things are common sense things and I want to be able to have this higher level of awareness with him, working with our building maintenance people and our safety coordinator, Tammy.
And what about? I'm sorry? So what about, what about the organizational aspect that Jim mentioned about that we're required to have a board of some kind and then having you in, in a dual role here for a level one and level two? Would it make sense to potentially look at that as well?
Oh, absolutely. The, you know, that might be something where we give one of those roles, you know, if I'm supposedly having two of those roles, then we might give one of those roles to another person or if you decide you don't want to find another person within the organization to structure one of those roles to, then we would modify it as Jim said, and just go to a two step role.
So should we carry that forward on our goals and action list?
Oh, yeah, we would, we could put that on the, your goals and objectives list for the later part of this meeting where you have to update it.
Great. Russ, Joe?
Hey, just a general comment and a question first to Jim. The last time the ADA regulations changed is 2012, Jim, did I understand that?
Correct, under the ADA, 521 CMR, boy, hasn't changed in 15, 20 years.
Okay. My general comment will be, I know for the past nine years during budget discussions, we have continuously put in money to address ADA issues.
Yep.
And, and, you know, I read over briefly your, your summary here and some of the issues that you mentioned were specifically like the, for example, Prifty Park Playground and you mentioned loose rubber chips. We were told we had to put in loose rubber chips.
So we We keep that under the federal standards too.
Right, so I, I mean, it's, I, you know, I appreciate, and I, I think we need to address all these issues and go forward, but I don't want anybody to get in the wrong idea that the town of Southwick was any way negligent because we have funded a considerable amount of money addressing many issues for all our buildings.
Well, it, it might be good for Jim to just let the audience know that every single city in town in the United States has to go through one of these processes and many of them are out of compliance.
And my last question to Jim would be, we were told by a previous individual that handled our ADA for our buildings and grounds, that we had received different waivers. Were you able to access in your study, any documents mentioning any of those waivers?
Yes, there was, yes, there were waivers received. And I, there were, yeah, there were a number of them, yes. I know one particularly was on the, the running slope of the entry ramp. It's about a four, maybe foot and a half too, too long. There was a couple of ones, yeah. And I think I mentioned, if there are waivers, I mentioned them in the, when I mentioned there's a general description of each property and I mentioned if there's a waiver there. So I would have had it in there. Getting back to your wood chips and loose rubber chips. So, yeah, I, almost every community across Commonwealth, they use wood chips or rubber chips. And they're not compactable, even though there's some, the industry was going to tell you, but they're not. Because if I'm in a wheelchair and a walker and, and they're just not, they're very hard to manipulate and especially if one's using even the crutches, that sort of thing. So there are three different types of surfaces that are considered for playground areas. There's one, and you can use stone dust or asphalt to get around and then you can, but then you're going to meet there's certain, there's ASTM standards within the fall zone of those play areas. And that is more, that's under ADA. 521 CMR really just addresses around the playground, not really in. So that's probably, and, and not to point blame at anyone whatsoever, but I'm going to say 99.9% of your building inspectors in Massachusetts are looking at 521 CMR and they don't look at the ADA. They just don't. It just, it just, that's what, you know, that's their bible is 521 CMR, the Mass State Building Code. So they're not looking at ADA and most of them probably didn't know that the standards went into effect in 2012. So, but that's the standard that ADA requires now and it's got to be, you know, firm, slip resistant, stable, you know, and, and, you know, no abrupt changes in level surface and that sort of thing. And there's only, there's only a handful municipalities that I've been to where they have a playground that meets requirements. Belton obviously has one. Milford has one in one of the schools. Another town, it's case me, I can't remember, Brook, actually Brookville has, has one, believe it or not. You don't have to make every single playground compliant with that nature. So some might be small little neighborhood parks. I mean, you would break your budget if you tried to, but you could designate if this is your, this is your playground for the town, then that would be designated as such as your accessible compliant playground, not a little top lot that's, you know, as your accessible compliant playground, not a little top lot that's, you know. So it's not something you'd have to figure out how you'd want to address when and if. The ADA, if you have a plan in place, that's the first step and you have your how and when you want to do things. But also this language ADA, that it's basically up to jurisdiction's ability to pay to have those improvements done. They don't expect the town to be able to do that. So you prioritize items, you do like I said, the low hanging fruit and you prioritize the capital plan and overtime. It could be 10 years, 15 years when maybe you get to doing the playground, maybe you can do some things, but you know, you just have to prioritize one of the, you know, things you can afford to do and how you're going to plan on, you know, on doing those.
Thank you, Jim.
So our new ADA compliant playground is at Otter Mill?
Well, it could be.
Could be, right?
Right, everything you speak of.
Yeah, wood chips, I mean, yeah. And, okay, you're talking Lolly Park?
No, I'm talking the track at Potter Mill.
Right next to it. We used community preservation funds to help the school region develop a playscape in a miniature park next to the track.
Okay.
So it's just been completed.
Yeah, I mean, I was in a hearing back a year or so ago and, and was it 521, the access board, my DM, that's on your real line feed, the access board is proposing new regs similar to what ADA has in place. And a representative for the industry who does the synthetic fibers for the play areas was pushing it and it was, I always got to be pretty, pretty much an argument and the state saying, no, that stuff is not, it doesn't, doesn't meet what we're looking to have. Right now, we don't address it. And there's other folks who on the federal side say, no, that is not a compliant surface as an accessible route of travel. It's okay, other areas around the playground, but not the accessible route. You have to do the whole thing, accessible route into and around, the rest key, you can use the wood chips. But I need to have access, firm, hard, stable, you get to those play components in between them and you can have all that other stuff around it.
Right. And you also get into, you know, I know where, when you start having the, you know, harder surface like the track surface that's soft and reboundable, then it becomes impervious for drainage calculations and everything. So you could see how it, everything plays off each other as to, literally the road to hell is paved with good intentions. Literally. Great. Any other questions for Mr. Maisick before we move on with our agenda for this evening? Great. Jim, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim, I'll be in touch.
All right, great. Take care of all of you.
Fantastic. We're right on time for our 6:10 appointment with Randy. This is turning into a planning board meeting right before our eyes. Randy, how are you?
Guys, how you doing this afternoon, this evening? Good.
Great. What do you got for us, sir? We're going to talk about paving projects.
Yes, exciting stuff, right? Very happy that we were able to utilize some funds on a secure town meeting, a million dollars for paving and infrastructure projects. On top of that, we do have some chapter 90 money that's available. I haven't seen the letter yet, but I think those money was voted on at the state level about a week ago.
Yeah, the governor signed it on July 3rd.
Yeah, yeah, so there's about $380,000 from chapter 90 money available. And then also there's about $100,000 in local dollars that's in our budget for these types of projects. So we have about 1.5 million dollars that we can put towards this year's paving program. So what I gave you was a letter with a list of many projects. Obviously, we can do a lot more work than we have for a million dollars. But I gave you a list of projects, kind of get a flavor of what I'm thinking. I also want to hear from you. I know, I'm sure you guys have some thoughts in terms of where you'd like to put some of these dollars. I do have some spreadsheets and other with me, other calculations with me, that if there's a project that's on your mind, I can try to pull up the numbers here. It may take me a minute or so, but I can get some investment numbers so we can have, continue the discussion on this today. So where would you like to begin? Obviously, the list I gave you has more than, well, more than $1 million worth of work. I can certainly give you what my recommendation would be, but do you want to, do you guys want to chime in at all first?
Are these in order of your recommendation for paving and drainage?
No, they're not, no.
And I hope your numbers are way off, but they're probably not.
I wish, I mean, I want to be a little conservative here. We know, we, as you know, we opened bids last week or a few weeks ago and bid pricing for paving and other capital approved projects have gone up.
Yeah.
Whatever project we move forward with or projects we move forward with, I will need to go out to bid for. We talked about that, I think, at our last meeting. So I'm hoping that if I can identify a specific project or specific locations, we can get a little bit of bid pricing through that avenue.
Okay.
But these dollars that you see in front of you are based on primarily the cost that we're seeing on the projects that were approved last year over on Nicholson Hill Road, Tammy Lane, Jeffrey Circle, Granville Road, and then North Long Yard Road, those projects we finished last.
So Randy, at the very least, we're going to want to be able to do the crack sealing of the various roads. That's sort of a given.
Yep, I agree with that, absolutely.
Right, and then, and then you're proposing maybe micro sealing Patriots Way and Lexington Circle. So those aren't big dollars, but that would keep those roads from deteriorating. And then there's the issue between splitting up a paving project and some sidewalks and so forth. Because I, I know that for the most part, this, this bond was worded as pavement. So the drainage aspects would have to be the smaller related, you know, ancillary issues to it.
Yeah, if we're paving a road and, you know, so say Tannery Road is a good example, you know, that's high on probably all of our lists. There are some pretty significant drainage projects that we do need to do on Tannery Road. First, at the intersection of Tannery and San West Road, there's a pretty large culvert that has failed and needs to be replaced. Also, in the neighborhood adjacent to the Revere Road, Salem Road neighborhood, there are some icy conditions that arise every winter on that hill. So we want to address those types of, those types of issues first if we're paving a road. And that really applies for all these projects, you know, if we're going to do a paved, paved road, I think we need to put some money into the drain.
Well, you know what we haven't done? Remember when, remember we all did a site visit when you wanted to buy that special patching, road patching equipment? Maybe we ought to do a site visit on some of these locations as the road commissioners, just everybody can get in their vehicles and could have a map and we could go look at some of these locations.
I think that's probably a good idea, Carl. Now, to go out there and, and, you know, once again, we've done it before, we can review. Randy, let me ask you a question. You know, I know you're an engineer and I probably already know the answer that you're going to give me. In the past, many communities just go out and pave. You know, they just try to get as many miles done as they possibly can. There's many roads in town that haven't been touched in 20, 30, 40 years with just paving. I mean, there was no drainage work done. I mean, we know that your road and my road are two prime examples where the snow plowing isn't effective because of the bumps and things like that. So we have to put extra time into clearing, clearing roads like that. So if we were to look at just paving, just paving, would, I know last year when we were looking at Tannery Road, I think we were in, you know, a lot less money than that 920,000 that you're, that you're proposing here. So I guess that would be my question.
So I guess your question, what do you mean by just paving? Are you talking just an overlay like we did on say Klein Road a couple of years ago?
Correct.
Or do like a full depth, you know, like paving?
Just, just an overlay, Randy.
Just a simple like two and a half, two inch overlay. That's what I'm referring.
What about, what about milling?
So we did a milling overlay on Granville Road last year. That was from College Highway to, my, yeah, my thought, I mean, if we're going to pave a road, I don't want to waste good dollars. I want to do it right. You know, and the right way to do it is, is you build the road up from the base, fix a drainage. I mean, that's, that's, that's the way it should be done. I know you're trying to stretch dollars and I can appreciate that, but, you know, I, you know, Klein Road's going to be a good example. I think then the next two or three years, and you're starting to see it a little bit now, you're going to see that cracking. And, you know, we put, I don't, I forget how much money we put into Klein Road, but that road is going to be just as bad as it was in a few years prior to paving. So I hate to see that happen.
Randy, where are we with, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I'm just going to add my two cents here. I agree with Carl about the crack sealing on the various road, 50,000. I certainly believe in micro seal Patriots and Lexington to extend the life of those roads. I think we did that last year. We did some crack sealing, we did some micro sealing, we did a couple of roads and then we tried to do a smaller neighborhood road.
And actually, that can get done before this fall too.
So, you know, I'd like to go out and kind of look at things and I, according to Randy's letter, it doesn't look like, even if we made a decision next couple of weeks, it's not going to happen this year anyways, correct? Randy?
I think it'd be, it'd be a stretch. I think we could get some work done depending on what the work, depending on the project. So the crack sealing and the micro seal, I think, I think we could probably skate that in by this fall. The projects that require some more drainage work, like I was talking about, or the larger projects, yeah, they may, that may take till next year. So we talked about the chapter 90 money just being released. So every town in the state is getting this bounty of money and they're all looking to spend it. So, you know, all of the contractors are getting phone calls from all local municipalities. They got, I got my money, let's, let's build our, let's build our road. So the sooner the better, you know, we're going to probably get behind the eight ball, the further he pushes back. But I thought, even before, I thought it was a stretch to get some of these roads paved this year. So I don't mind meeting you on site. I think that's a great idea. And we could take a look at, you know, where we think, you know, the priorities are. You do know we have a paving manager program. We talked about that several times over the years. All these projects scored high on that, within that program.
The beta program.
They're the beta program, correct. Yeah, that's one of the reasons why they're on this list here. So, yeah, I'd be happy to, happy to meet you guys on site. Just let me know when and where.
Do you have a bit of an update on the projects that we approved last year? We knew we were going to roll into this year as to where those, those guys are as far as getting done?
Yeah, so Nicholson Hill Road is under construction. They started yesterday, full bore. And then they're telling us that as soon as they know Nicholson Hill Road, this is the, this is through Crestview, they're doing the drainage work and the road widening. As soon as they're done with Nicholson Hill Road, they're going to move over to Tammy Lane and Jeffrey Circle. And we have paving contracts lined up for both. So when Crestview is not doing the paving, it's a separate contract for both, for both locations. But those are, those are in the works. And Depot Street is done. And then the other product is drainage improvements over on Cedar Street. And that's going to follow Tammy Lane and Jeffrey Circle.
And how about Tannery?
Tannery, so there was, there's no plans for Tannery at this point. So there were some funds set aside, but those dollars had to be reallocated for Congressmont Road, if you recall that conversation.
Yep.
But right now, there's no money set aside for Tannery Road.
I believe the board's issue with Tannery Road was it wanted to wait until the, that subdivision on the golf course east side was completed because that was going to be materially affecting the roadway with contractors and site development going into the, the new road to be laid out.
Absolutely. And I also want to compliment you guys. I got a couple of phone calls about the condition of Tannery Road. I guess it really deteriorated in the middle of the winter towards spring. And I had, I made a note to call you guys and before I did, you guys were out there and with the new equipment that you guys have fixed most of the potholes and smoothed it out pretty good. The person called me back to thank me and I told them to call you because I had nothing, absolutely nothing to do with it. So I did want to thank you for that, for being proactive with that. And my other question is, have you had any contact with the state regarding 57, say, coming west of Foster and North Long Yard? They had, they had done from the town line almost to Foster with an overlay a couple of years ago. And now this winter, that previous regime had done a very thin shim piece over there. And I don't know if they have any intention to come over and look at that or if we own that piece of 57?
Town maintained section we're talking about. So the state did, the state's actually, the state's only portion of Feeding Hills Road is from Long East all the way to Agawam. I know they paved beyond there. Consider that a gift, I guess.
Thank you.
I'm not going to complain. Right, exactly.
I don't think they knew any better, but they went to, you know, close to the calories with that project. So anything that you're talking, are we talking about west of Foster Road or section? Yeah, that, that area has gotten a little rough over the years. Be a town project.
Yep.
And I also want, we talked sidewalks. There, we do have a sidewalk fund that was established two years ago at town meeting. We use dollars that we secure through the Greens West Development to pay partially for the new sidewalks and Depot Street. And at some point, we should be beginning a, another contribution to that fund for the Greens East in the range of about $50,000, $50,000, $55,000. So those funds are not in hand yet, but they will have to be deposited to the town prior to the issuance of the first building firm. So I would expect, I know they're out there, they're out there laying out the roads and they've done a lot of tree cutting. I don't know how soon that'll be, but.
Randy, Randy, you could use that to do item 11 and finish Depot Street then.
We could, yep. When that money comes in, absolutely.
Okay, what does the board think about that one?
That'd be excellent. That's part of, personally, I think that'd be a great one. We already did it from the rail trail to get it, to hopefully hook it up to the sidewalk system that was put in up and down College Highway there.
So, so obviously, since we're going to do a site visit on the other, the first eight items, why doesn't the board think about giving approval to Randy to take care of, to authorize nine, 10, and 11?
Russ Fox would make that motion.
Let's hold up here. So I'm for nine and 10. I think that's great and definitely 32,000. Can he use other funds for that sidewalk and then take it out of the sidewalk account when it comes in? Or does it only have to come out of the sidewalk account once it's in there?
Well, it's sidewalk for sidewalk. You can't borrow, you know.
No, I understood, always we have to wait. That's fine. And Randy, could you tell me on the small drainage, before we throw that money into the paving world, can you give me two projects on small drainage replacement that you'd like, that need to be done? What are the first two you want done on that small drainage?
So honestly?
Honestly.
Do any of those. The one on George Loomis, I would probably focus on first.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the one in Tannery is a big dollar one. I don't know if you understand. But we could do, you know, either, either Granville Road or Clausen or some road, any of those. I mean, they're all, all, they're all just safety issues of ponding and icing, icing conditions that pop up during winter time. We try to tackle a couple of these every year. I just lumped that into this discussion here.
Yeah, I would like to add two of those to that motion just because they're small dollars now before we get rid of all that money. And then it's something he can then schedule then, whether it happens issue or not, who knows.
All right, so Randy, number 14 was your number one ranked one?
Yep.
Okay, is, is number 15 your second ranked one?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we'll do 14 and 15.
Okay.
And what's the pleasure of the board? I just want to pick away at the small stuff while we can.
Yeah, I kind of agree. And the one at 131 and 156, are those two that could be done near simultaneously to knock them out?
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're not going to, I'm. Yeah, they're, um, I mean, they're not gonna, I'm, we're not gonna save any dollars, I don't think, by glumping them together. Um, but, uh, they are, they're somewhat related.
I ju, I mean, like, you have the, like you said, the million dollars is really gonna be allocated to paving projects, road project, and then the Chapter ninety of. What'd you say? It was about three eighty? So, you know, we could. I, I kind of agree with Joe here. Maybe we could look at, you know, fifty or seventy or even, you know. Eighty thousand dollars out of that to say, okay. You know, knock off a couple of these drainage projects while they're on the list and get them done before their failures, hopefully, and, you know, remedy the safety situation.
So let's look at the first three then. Fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Okay.
And then we can look at what monies we have left when we go do our tour. And then we know what we have for real money versus, you know, allocating it every which way.
You want me to redo that motion, Mr. Chairman?
I would, sir.
All right, Mr. Fox would make the motion that we authorize number nine, number ten, number eleven. Number fourteen, number fifteen, and number sixteen, under the letter submitted by DPW Director Randy Brown. Uh, for approval for this fiscal year.
I'll s, Joe Didi will second that motion.
Great. Uh, roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Great. Randy, can I ask you one more question before we move ahead?
Yes.
Trying to balance what Mr. Fox had said and what you had said. You know, one of the things that I think. We are, I think we are all in agreement that. Obviously, the best course of action would be. When you have a road that you're gonna reconstruct, fix the drainage, fix the base, put the road in, it's gonna last twenty or thirty years, right? Versus two, three, five, seven years if you, if we just dump pavement on a road. I think we're all in agreement and, and in that regard, it's just, it becomes strictly a monetary issue. But I have one question more is, on some of the roads. That are not too far gone yet. Are, are we able to do anything with them along the lines of crack sealing or even going back where we've already cracked sealed and re-crack sealing? For example, just to keep the deterioration in check until we can reprioritize and move roads back to where. You know, make them last longer. You know, if we got twenty years out of a road and we're trying to get it to twenty-five, you know. So just keeping that in mind as you, as you allocate dollars, and I don't know how far fifty thousand dollars goes. This is more your area than mine. For fifty thousand dollars, how much crack sealing can you do, right? Um, versus if that was seventy thousand or sixty thousand, would that help you as far as prolonging some of these other roads that? You know, that are getting up there that really do need it, but maybe we can stretch them out a little bit?
Yeah, so I, I, I love crack sealing. I think it's a great, uh, it's a great pavement preservation technique. Um, so I, I keep a list of all the roads we crack seal. And, uh, I think after this year, we will have gone through the first round of roads. Um. Of, of most town roads, at least where crack sealing is suitable, since I've been, since I've started. So I've been here about almost seven years now. Um, in those six years of construction projects, um, we've cracked sealed, you know, a lot, a lot of roads. So as far as a dollar wise, I know fifty thousand dollars is about five days of crack seal. That, that's what the crew rate is. It could vary based on the road. I mean, some roads require a pretty extensive crack sealing, others not as much. So to tell you what's gonna get you so many feet of crack seal, it's, it's not, uh, I can't do that. Um, some road, every road, every road's gonna be different. But, uh, certainly I do want to exceed cracks and continue. That is a great program. It certainly has extended the life of a lot of our roads. The problem is, you know, the roads, uh, listed in items one through eight are, are well beyond crack seal.
No, I, no, I get that. I, I just was, I'm actually looking out the window while we were talking. I looked out at my road, right? Because they did come through and crack seal that. Hmm, two or three years ago, right? And I believe it's really extended the life of that pavement because they filled some serious cracks that. Would have had bigger problems with water getting in and freezing and splitting that pavement apart worse. But as I walk on there and see it, it looks like there, some of these roads are due for kind of re-crack sealing, if you will, which might extend, you know. And this is a perfect example of a, you know, a twenty-year-old subdivision road now that needs to be. You know, it's getting near the second half of its life, if you will. And some of the roads that I know, I, we talked about last year. A couple of these that are, are gonna be on here, you're gonna start to see some of the subdivision roads come into play. Lexington Circle is a great one. That's probably what. Getting on fifteen years now? Twelve years?
A little more on that. Yep.
Yeah.
Right? So, you know, and we're gonna microseal that whole thing, so maybe that's gonna buy us a ton of time, but some of the other roads, maybe the continued crack sealing is gonna help. You know, buy us time to get some of these other bigger projects done and get caught up. I don't think we'll ever catch up. I'm not, I'm not living in fantasy land, but, you know, help us prolong some of these roads. But. So, yeah, let's schedule that time to, to go out and have a look at some of these guys and, you know, Joe and Russ, make a list of. You know, I know I'm out and about every weekend or so, just driving around to see what's going on. Make a list of roads that you think should be on a list and then we'll look at them where they are on the beta and plan a little field trip.
Yeah, can I ask other locations you're considering?
Other roads?
Yeah, other roads, yeah.
I, I had, I had, uh, about four roads that I thought that we should think about again it. You know, last year we did some main arteries and then we tried to do, uh, Jeffrey Circle and, uh, Tammy. You know, the, which hadn't been done in forty years. And I started looking at Matthews Road, Fernwood, Birchwood, and Pineywood.
And I had, I had Woodside on my list of, of roads that that's probably forty-five, fifty years that subdivision went in in the sixties and. Roads never been, you know, it's been patched and whatever, but it's never been gone over. And it's near the end of its useful life. So I think we'll probably all have a list like that. It's probably one that we should look at it where they are on the beta. And where, you know, what the condition that they're actually in. Because, you know, beta's a, it's a great tool. And, but it, you know, it can't be exact too, because some of the pavement might have been, you know. Not have been great when it went in or the, just the traffic patterns or whatever, or they've degraded over time due to other projects that went on around there. So. You know, we should definitely look at that and add that to our little list so we can, you know, take Russ's, take mine. Joe, I'm sure you have a few. You know, let's take a look at those and see how they, they fit.
All right, you're done. Move on.
Excuse me?
So Randy, do we have qualifications that we look at for these new roads or subdivisions going in? To make sure they're, I mean, they, they must, right? They fit a certain standard. So it does last that twenty years that Doug speaks of?
Yeah, there are, there are standards that are written into our bylaws that's offered as part of.
And I assume our engineer checks all that before the roads accepted or all that's done?
Yeah, we do our best track of, uh, construction as it's happening, so we keep an eye on the contract. Um, so using the right products, right materials, they're meeting those standards.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't want to hold us up.
And then, and also to Randy's credit in that, I know on some of the subdivision roads, you know, there was, uh. You know, they've, they've done boring's and core samples as the road, you know, the base coat's in, they survive a winter, then the final coat, and they've done the testing to make sure that those roads work. You know, because we've seen examples of stuff that's come in front of us and other boards. Where that didn't always happen in the past, where they didn't follow the standard and didn't do it right, and we end up with a problem, uh, Robin Road. But, uh, you know, some of the other roads are in, you know, have held up fairly well and have done really well, thanks to Randy and those guys, you know. Checking up on them. Okay.
Can I, can I ask one clarification?
Absolutely.
East, number eleven, the sidewalk on Depot Street, did we agree to utilize the, um, sidewalk fund for that? Or is that gonna be taken out of the, um, appropriation?
It sounded like consensus to use the sidewalk money from what I heard.
As soon as it's in there for you.
Yep.
Yep, I just want to clarify. Thank you.
So, and it, especially since we're expecting to see it this year, at least you can queue it up or bid it out or be ready to go as soon as you do have money in hand to go do it.
Is there anything left in that account?
No, we, we had about eighteen thousand dollars from, uh, the east, uh, the west side. And we spent partially towards, uh, the sidewalks that were installed on Depot Street.
Okay.
So there's, that balance is zero. Um, I'm not sure when, uh, you know, this project's moving forward. I mean, I've seen the construction. I know they're out there. Um. But I don't know how soon that money's gonna be coming in. So.
Understood.
Was there any sidewalk money coming from the one on Vining Hill or is that predate the sidewalk fund? Noble Steed.
Yeah.
What was that?
I think it predated. I think Randy did talk to Mark Begley about that.
Yeah.
I think that, um. That was all, um, over with. By the time that subdivision came through.
Gotcha.
Did we ever, Carl, did we ever follow up with that, uh, grant money that might be available? I know it wouldn't be thirty thousand dollars, but.
For which location, Russ?
Well, it was sidewalk monies or road monies, uh, to help with, uh, economic development, uh, due to the COVID nineteen.
Uh. Yeah, Randy, that's that CARESAC section for, a lot of that had to do with also giving people access to. Locations where there was outdoor dining and services, but we, we weren't so much interested in that. We were interested with connecting maybe the rail trail i- in the new sidewalk system.
Yeah, so I.
Which would get us to downtown where there are restaurants and, uh, things like that.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So, so it is, it is set up as a shared program, so as, as they're looking for shared uses or, or multi-uses of property. So. Think of, uh, you know, a downtown street that's being converted to, you know, uh, you know, recreation and, and, and outdoor dining, or people are actually eating in the middle of the road and they're shutting the road down. That's what the product's really looking for. Um, there is a. For that program, um, where you could get points for products that would qualify for the, uh, Save Roots to Schools program. We talked about that as well. So I was gonna look into that and, uh, I was thinking maybe Powder Mill Road might be a good opportunity. Um, if maybe to extend the sidewalk down to, say, the Wally Park. Um.
Yeah.
Good opportunity to tie in that, that grant program. I, I don't think, or Granville Road, I don't think those locations would, would fit under the, that category of the grant, but maybe Powder Mill Road would.
I, I think Powder Mill Road, I think at one time Dave Loring, when he worked for Elmer Huntley. Was involved in, in it, in a sidewalk design on that road before we ended up. Um, having to just do it as a Chapter ninety paving project because we didn't have the full right-of-way certificate issues addressed. So Dave Loring might have some, uh, memories on that one, Randy.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before we're done with Randy, he does have a request in for a fund reallocation. On the earmark on our, uh, DPW equipment pieces that he's looking for, maybe. Um, some of that funds to be, uh. Used from the eighty-eight thousand dollar balance that we didn't have enough to do the roadside mower.
Correct.
To use it for Bobcat. So is there any objection to him using some of that, uh, funds within the eighty-eight thousand? For ninety-six hundred and fifty dollars worth of attachments for the Bobcat? Which was another piece of equipment that we used under the, I believe, maybe the stabilization fund vote?
Yep.
Is there any concerns about him doing that and redesignating that?
Russ Fox will make that motion.
Joe Didi will second that. I do want that mower though.
Yep.
Okay, motion's made in second. It's a roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
There you go, mister.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy.
I'll be in touch.
Thank you for the time.
Yep, thank you.
Great. So now we're up to public comments. If anybody has any, anything they want to bring before the Board of Selectmen? If you could, uh. The floor is yours. If you could just state your name and address for the record. And, um, we glad to take your input. Okay. Getting back. So we have a couple of reserve fund transfers that are in your packet. Uh. First one is for stormwater salaries. This was stormwater technician salary for balance of year.
Yep, these are just to, to fund out because of the, uh. The hours spent by people, so, um, that's for the solid waste one. And then we also had the summer. Help out of that line item last year before we adjusted it in this upcoming year's budget to, uh, have more dollars there. And then the building inspector, we had, uh, several weeks of overlap where we had the transition of the new one with the outgoing one.
Would you like a motion, Doug?
I'll take them. It's, they're each fifteen hundred bucks. Yes, please.
So I'll make a motion for both of those stormwater and for building inspector salaries.
Russ Fox will second.
Great. Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Excellent. And I see the, the deputy chief is here, correct?
Yeah. Good afternoon.
Hey, how are you?
I'm well. How was everyone?
Very good. And we have a couple of items that we want to address tonight for the, uh. New firefighters and call for CMTs and firefighters, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So why don't I go through this list real quick? Is that okay?
Certainly.
So. Good Lord, I've known Aaron Sharlin since he was like two. Aaron Sharlin, Shane Hope. Is this, is this a returning hope?
That's correct.
Fantastic. Timothy Girich.
That's correct, yep.
Trevor Svanken.
Yep.
Patrick Hawley, Ryan Tedesco. Michael Macchio.
Yep.
Oh my goodness. William Carroll.
Yes.
Does he live on the other side of the covered bridge?
Um, yes, he does.
Oh, good Lord. He used to live around the corner from me. John DeForest. And he's gonna be the photographer.
Yes.
Fantastic. And these guys have all passed all the rigmaroles and testing and.
They did. We actually, um, took a bold step and had, uh, in-house interviews with them with social distancing and masks and everything else. One person in the building at a time, brought them up, did a, a brief interview with them. Um, with a small panel of the officers and somebody from the career staff. Um, these were the people that we interviewed from a large list of applicants. Um, they're all from Southwick, so that's a good thing. So we all have, uh, this is all people. That are firefighters, firefighter EMTs, and, uh, Bill Carroll is the one lone, uh, EMP only. And the rest are, uh, the firefighters aspiring to be EMTs. So it's a very good, a lot of people coming to us.
Awesome. And is Shane is still a firefighter in Dalton?
That's correct. Um, and Shane is looking to make a move to a different department. Uh, in Lee, which would have a different work schedule, which allows him to actually live in Southwick, so he's gonna be returning to Southwick and on the department as a call member.
We still have hope.
That's it. We got three hopes.
So we're looking for a motion to appoint all of these fine gentlemen to the department, correct?
As subject to.
Subject to the yadda yaddas, right?
Yep, correct.
So Joe Didi will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second it.
Fantastic. Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Congratulations to all of these people.
Very good.
Mr. Fox, I suddenly feel extremely old because I remember Billy Carroll being born. This, that, that's not good.
I'm not gonna touch it.
I'm just telling you. I mean, I remember his grandfather used to live right on Pearl Brook. God bless. Uh, and then the other two topics we're gonna hold off for a couple of weeks on, correct?
Well, we still have the appointment of the current slate of firefighters, the reappointments.
No, we weren't gonna do that. We, you got all these new guys. Yeah, we're gonna get to that right now.
And then the other two items would like to table until the meeting on the twenty-first.
Very well. Okay, so else. I'm gonna skip ahead to this one. Uh, this is the twenty, twenty-one fire department appointment list. And I don't think I need to read all of these names. Um.
Are there any changes that we need to know about?
That was my question.
Uh, the only other change is, is that, um, two members are not being reappointed. Um, they were notified of it. They are understanding of that as well.
Okay, thank you.
And one, one member that is on the list, uh, Joe Martinez, is, uh, returning back to the department. Um, Joe had a injury, took a little bit of a leave of absence in November. And had gone down to Florida, uh, to address some family issues and has returned and wanted to come back to the department. So. Um, he was, he left as a member in good standing, but he, he had been, um, kind of out of the circuit for a while.
Okay, I'll make that motion to reappoint all these guys for another year.
Russ Fox will second.
Great. Uh, Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Congratulations, one and all.
Very good.
Awesome.
All right, well, thank you for your time. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Randy, you still here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you want to talk real quickly to the reconstruction of Congamon Road with the bounds?
Oh my God. Jesus.
Uh, like, yes. Um, so there's an issue on Congamon Road that, uh, came up. I'd say maybe a couple of months ago. Um, there were some property bounds that were not constructed at the right location. So there was some
Isn't that the whole point of a bounce?
Yes, yes. So I, I, I talked to our consultant. I've talked to Mass DOT. Um, they're both pointing fingers at each other right now as far as what the proper data set that was used versus what should have been used. So, um, I, uh, I'm trying to help organize a coordinated meeting between the two parties to get this resolved. I'm hoping that, uh, we're not going to get dragged into this any further than we are at this point. Um, but certainly it's, it's in our interest to make sure that these property bounds are located properly for our interest and for the residents' best interest.
Randy, if you need a guest that day, let me know. I'd love to go with you.
Right.
What a mess.
It's the gift that keeps on giving.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're going to hold on this. All right, I see, uh, Mrs. Mash here. So why don't I, I'm going to move ahead to that real quick if that's okay with you guys. We have a bunch of appointments to discuss. I'm going to come right back to it, but I would like to address this. Um, the right of first refusal on, uh, Mort Vining at number 38. It's one of the, uh, southernmost parcels on Mort Vining. If you recall from our last meeting, we had seen a, essentially an A and R plan of like 12 or 13 lots carved off of a 70-ish acre parcel. Yeah, so thereabouts. And I had the pleasure of speaking with, um, the applicant at a planning board meeting last week, and then I also had a discussion with, um, the AGCOM member who had asked us to look at this closer prior to releasing the, the right of first refusal on this property. And I believe now that the applicant, application has been revised to cancel the entirety of the A and R, the basically front lot subdivision plan that was put forth. And instead they're just looking to take the single house, so just about an acre of land with the existing house on it out of 61A, which by all rights it shouldn't have been in 61A in the first place. But it, as it happens with farms over time, that that kind of thing goes on. So there is a revised application that came in, um, regarding having just that one lot. That one lot also went in front of the planning board as part of their process to, to grant A and R, um, because it does have access, frontage, um, and dimensions to, to be, um, endorsed as approval not required under subdivision control law. So that portion is done. So after consulting with the AGCOM, uh, Marissa, she's totally in favor of it. So if I, after talking with Carl and I think everyone else, we're all in a, we were all in agreement that the updated, uh, application to remove from chapter 61, we should, um, decline our right of first refusal and sign it to allow that single parcel now to come out of 61A and it'll probably be sold.
Right, we do not have the, uh, sign off from the plant, uh, the Board of Assessors yet, but, um, they, I did speak to the chairman and they will be looking at having a meeting and that'll be one of the items that they address to prepare for the select board's sign off.
But everybody just needs to do their part, right? As far as this goes, correct?
Yes.
So can we, can we move on that subject to their?
Yeah, you could, you certainly can authorize yourself as a board and, and its members to sign off on it when it's submitted to you.
So I guess I'm looking for that motion.
So moved.
Russ Fox will second.
Very well. Uh, Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Very well. Janet, so we've done our part. As soon as the Board of Assessor gets us the paperwork, we will get it signed off and get it to you as we said we were going to do.
Um, I, that's good. I talked with the assessor today and it wasn't a very good conversation. She was, she was saying that it's impossible for her to give us rollback taxes because the new mill rate is not established for 2021. And I said, I'm sure you've had this situation before. We are someone that's looking to buy the house. And she said, well, you know, we don't have the new mill rate, so maybe in September, October, which really I found very upsetting and disappointing. I said, there's got to be a way to escrow. It's a very minimal amount of land we're talking about in terms of rollback, but it sounds like, I, I'm trying to understand the process and it's very hard to get clear answers sometimes. But it sounds like now the assessor has to, um, sign a, a release. I understand that's what you said tonight?
I think they give, I think as part of it is they give, um, well, there's, there's multiple parts to it as you're finding out. But, uh, you know, the, the planning board part, our part, and then the assessors. But the assessors is going to tell you what the delta tax would be if, when you take the land out, you have to pay back taxes for a period of whatever that is right on this piece.
Right.
Yeah. So I guess what they can't figure out is from July 1st to the 7th? I don't, I don't know the answer. Plus five years. I mean, the previous five years should be easy because the mill rate was set. Carl, do you know any more about this than?
No, well, I mean, I, 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 I was going to suggest, uh, Russell, having been on the Board of Assessors, could give the chairman a call and determine how that formula works. Um, I mean, obviously the, the town's tax recap sheet for fiscal year 21 has not been set yet, even though the town budget's been set. Um, the values are still going through the process with the Department of Revenue and the, uh, the various forms for new growth, um, and all the other certifications that we have to get from the DOR. So that's all of the, those other steps that we go to when we have, um, our sign offs and our tax classification hearing. And that all goes toward compiling the tax recapitulation sheet. But, um, I would suggest that Russell confer with, uh, Paul, having been an assessor himself.
Mr. Chairman, I'll talk to the, uh, chairman of the Board of Assessors. Ask him to reach out to, uh, Roy Bishop, who's the consultant for the assessors. Because as, as it has been said, I'm sure there's been cases of like this in the past, and I think it can be figured out.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I mean, the, um, I, you know, I appreciate the applicant is coming back with the, the corrected plan and, and, you know, I know, you know, we went out of cycle to talk to Ag and everybody else to make sure they were on board with this new plan and that we weren't overstepping our bounds here by, by releasing the, the 61. And they're all in agreement. If it's only the house, and that'll give them time to talk to the, the landowner if there's any other developments, no pun intended, on the backland there. Um, but yeah, it, it doesn't make sense to hold up this, you know, a singular house sale for potentially months. So if you could reach out, that would be great.
And then reach back out to Janet, Russ, and, and let her know where you're at with all this.
So Russ, could I give you my phone number?
Yeah, I'll get it to her. So it's not, you don't have to put it out in a public meeting. I'll, I'll get it to Russ.
Okay.
All right.
Appreciate it.
And thank you for your patience. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, back on track here. Do we want to go over appointments and positions, boards and committees for 21?
I'd ask that it be tabled.
Okay.
And then we can just let the chairman deal with that moving forward.
Respectfully decline.
Oh, all right, sorry.
It would be, it would be a disaster. Um, I do, I think we can, if, if it's okay. I did see SEMA got their ones in. Can we just, uh, push those through tonight? Mr. Fox, since, since, just to save the 12 pieces of paper we're going to get in next week's packet if we don't?
You might as well. The police are coming on the next meeting, so let's knock a
Jury's still out on that one.
Russ Fox will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so there was, I think, three or four, including Charlie and Mrs. Dunlap and, uh,
Nick Baldiga, Paul Easton, Dunlap.
And, and Stromgren.
Eric Carroll, Charles Darling, and Keith Stromgren.
And the Eric Carroll that's on that list is not related to the Billy Carroll we just put on the fire department, I don't believe.
Okay.
As, as your added trivia. So I'll take Mr. Fox's motion. Joe, would you like to second the motion?
For 20 points, I will second it, yes.
20 points. Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. All right. CDBG, release of lien, lien for 143 North Lake.
This is straightforward one. They've, uh, they've, they had a, um, a lien on it from community development work and now they're, um, um, made some changes in the status of the property. So, uh, you know, we have to release the lien because it's either run its course or they've, um, going to give the money back on the balance over after the work.
I'll make a motion for 143 North Lake Avenue.
Uh, Mr. Fox will second that.
Uh, can you amend the motion to be a motion for the chair to sign? For the document?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Fantastic. Mort Vining, we did. Reader Raves as the reigning champion? How do we win again? And we want to talk to that or what this is all about?
It's probably about advertising and money, I bet, you told me.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Two pages here that says.
Go ahead, Fox. Tell us on this.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we need to reach out and have the good citizens of Southwick and people that love to visit Southwick go on, uh, the, um, the internet and vote for Southwick as the number one community to live in.
Will they mail you an absentee ballot for this election?
I believe they probably already have.
I think they only have till August 2nd, so.
Okay, so tell all your friends.
Tell all your friends because, uh, we deserve it.
Okay, vote early and vote often, as they say.
Right, I'm sure, I'm sure Manone and Dennis and Peter will get the word out.
As the reigning champion, right?
Yeah.
And I'm sure the, uh, the ceremony is probably going to be different this year than it was last year just by what's going on.
Yeah, good point.
Um, maybe they won't have the Elvis guy this year. Um, common victualers, hawkers and peddlers discussion. I see that we have a anyone Smith, hawker and peddler's permit. Does anyone have any details on what this is? Cindy, can you Come off a mute.
Can you hear her?
I can hardly hear. Cindy, we can hardly hear you.
I got nothing.
We got nothing. Cindy, hold up. We can't, we can't hardly hear you. Is this something that we can put on our next agenda that we can, maybe we can hear her better at the next meeting?
Well, I mean, I, I have what's in front of me.
Is there an applica, or can, Carl, can you help out here?
Yeah, there's an application that's, if you look at your, uh, pages after that the word, the word anyone is just an illustration. So this came through the, um, um, the Board of Health. And now this is an individual who lives in, uh, North Granby, Connecticut, who is looking for a common victual's license to go from place to place to, um, you know, provide this service. And they've, they've filled out all the necessary, uh, information on their application about what they, uh, what hours they want to work and they'd be going, um, in town. So, I mean, my, my issue was I wasn't sure why these were necessarily being asked for because people can get a separate, um, hawkers and peddlers license and you can get a, a state version just to go anywhere in any town in Massachusetts, or you can get an individual one for the town of Southwick.
But this person applied for one just from us.
From just from us, of course, because they have a food, um, you know, carrying, you know, truck or device or card or something, they of course have to go through our Board of Health and be inspected by the health inspector for the food they're going to be serving. And, and Joe's had experience doing this firsthand. He knows that has to happen.
I saw the signature and I thought it was a fake form at first because it looked just like Mr. Didi's signature on the signature of owner or manager on the last page.
Hey.
It, it was. It, you see there's a resemblance?
Yeah.
And, and the guy's name is Joe too, so, all right.
An evil twin brother?
Oh, I don't know if he's evil or not. I haven't met him.
Um, but this is a common victo. It's not really a hawkers and peddlers.
No, that's why I was wondering whether it should be. Because generally hawkers and peddlers licenses, I mean, common victuals are stationary restaurants where you meet everybody for the first time. And the common victual license is, is under your authority to grant, which allows someone to be in the business of serving food. And, you know, as opposed to a liquor license, which is a different, uh, you know, a different type of a license. But that's, those are still common victuals too. And then the Board of Health, after you decide whether or not someone's going to be in business serving food, then the Board of Health, you know, examines their role to approve for the sanitary conditions and the appropriateness of, of their operation and that they meet all the food code service regulations.
Right. And this doesn't even say where they're going. It's just
Or what he does.
What he does is, so that's throwing me off.
And it says something about an amusement device or jukebox. That makes no sense.
Well, let's not go there.
Well, it's what it says on the last page before the signature that looks like yours. That's not yours.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion to table during this meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think this was part of what we were talking about with her upstairs and getting a little more organized going into next year. That it'd be a package. This is probably part of that issue that we're going to start seeing.
Totally agree. So let's carry this to the next, I don't think, do we need a motion and a vote to table it or we just table it? Okay. Um, authorized chair to sign PVPC, CDBG Town Owner Agreement for 403 College Highway. Carl, what's this one?
Uh, that, that's under your present, um, community development block grant. And part of the service of, uh, Piney Valley goes out and screens all the people that are going to be, apply for this program, make sure that they're appropriately qualified under income eligibility rules. And then as they come across, um, you know, once they get all the paperwork, then they put this in front of you for housing rehabilitation work. And this is for housing rehabilitation.
Okay, so I would need a motion for the chair to sign this, uh, Town Owner Agreement for 403 College Highway.
So moved, Joe Didi.
President, Russ Fox.
Roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Great. Raising of a pride flag for LGBTQIA plus, A plus, Community for Pride Month for June. Fantastic. Today's July 7th. Um, I understand that Westfield did this in the month of June. Seeing how that is in, uh, June, I think we can calendar this for, uh, next June or for May for discussion for June of next year if there's no objection.
Just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, uh, the young lady, uh, reached out to me over the internet thinking I was still the chairman, uh, at the end of June, um, and asked me how to go about this. I, I suggested that she, uh, submit a letter to the select board. Uh, but maybe we could get back to her to make sure she understands. And also the fact that it's normally, uh, the people would kind of present us with a flag if we were going to raise it, you know, uh, it wouldn't be something that we would be purchasing.
Exactly. I will be glad to do that. I actually know, uh, it was, uh, Ms. Motzko. Exactly. I will be glad to do that. I actually know it was Ms. Motzko. She was the intern at DPW over the summer as well and I'm familiar with her. I'll reach out to her this this coming week.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug.
No problem.
You're the best.
Southwick Police Department Boat Donation from Saunders Marina. Fantastic. Carl?
Mr. Chairman, as you you'll see, the letter from the Chief of Police, he needs another vehicle that will lend itself to being ready for responses. And this would be a dive team, emergency response boat. It could either be kept at Saunders Marina, who's donating it to the town and the police department. Or he was conferring with the Chairman of the Lake Management Committee, who would possibly keep it at his residence, which is on Middle Pond, so that it would be able to be responsive to boat going north and south on any responses. The other police boat, you know, has to be trailed into places, so that can't be sent out as fast, but it is. And it has a lot more sensitive electronics and other equipment on it. So that's why they wanted to to make this known as an opportunity. It is the it is the former Westfield Police Department pontoon boat that was used on Hampton Ponds also. So that's the background on it. And that's something that the Chief of Police is looking for. So obviously, if you were to accept this donation, they have said they would use their forfeiture account to finish any improvements on. But obviously, going forward, you would understand that we would have to ensure this under our Maya insurance coverage for both the the vehicle and the equipment that's on it. So be that in mind that it does become a recurring cost going forward.
Any idea on what that cost is?
No, but I'm I'm I mean, I could go and get specific numbers for you. Or I'm not sure it's going to be that much, but it's something that the police department is looking to do.
Well, the good news is they'll be getting rid of their dive truck here. Hey, can we find out what's going to happen with the other unit that was supposed to leave the fire department? I know there was talk of a merge between police and fire and dive and rescue. So just just wondering.
Well, there's actually two things that have to come. Now that the fire has gotten its equipment, there's there's the older pumper it's going to get rid of. So the older engine. So we need to find when that's going up for sale because Russ said it would be soon. And then when I talked to him about the old rescue unit also being ready to go out or being ready to be transferred over to police, he mentioned that it may end up. He may end up talking about repurposing that for the regional hazmat team that comes out of Chickapi. So we're going to have to get an update.
No, that can stay for our speech.
So we're going to have to get an update from him on the disposition of those two vehicles. And I will have him submit that to you for your next meeting.
Please. And and also, I think that the new mini pumper had not been pressed into service yet. They were still going through training and warranty stuff and little fix them up things and then driver training and education for the force. So before they could take the other truck offline, they had to get that one online. So.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we we always do that when we get a new.
I know. Just within the context of the time period, right?
It goes through a shift and cruise.
Right. So how about we get the motion for the boat?
Joe Didi will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second it.
Reminder that boat boat stands for breakout another thousand. Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Congratulations. Okay, and PVPC alum invoice for $8,435.59 for fiscal year 19 CDBG services.
Right, that should read admin services.
Not alum. That's didn't make any sense to me either.
Yeah, well, I guess somebody needs some alum.
At least.
Yai yai. That's a lot of alum. Well, not really. We spent 800 grand. It's all at the bottom of the lake. Okay. We covered the payables. Do we need to vote on that to?
I think we need to vote on that.
All right. So I need a motion for that, please.
Mr. Fox will make the motion.
I didn't hear any of that. Joe Didi, second.
Good. Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Thank you very much. All right, we did cover payables, payroll and minutes, and we did have the additional payroll warrant. Thank you, Mr. Fox. We covered the Congammon Road Project unless there's further updates.
Nope.
Great. Given the time, can we continue our green energy consultant till the next meeting at least? Do we want to discuss the custodial department tonight or you want to table that to our next meeting? Pleasure of the board.
I I'm prepared tonight if 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 nobody if there's anybody that wants more time, that's fine.
Joseph?
I'm fine. I think they're both real good candidates. Yeah, I'm fine with it. And no matter who you pick, they have a year of the term probation. Is that correct, Carl?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Floor is open for a motion.
Well, I think we had two good candidates and I see Dan still with us, so I give him a lot of credit as a town resident being here with us. Two good candidates, you know, and unfortunately, I I think that Hillary has worked for the town of Southwick. She already knows all the buildings, the people, the process. I would think that would give Hillary the edge on this. Nothing against Dan, but I think it would just give Hillary the edge. So I would make the motion to offer the employment to Hillary based on all the yada, yada, yadas.
Joe Didi will second that.
Very well. It's a roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. And I I'd like to thank Dan. I think he's an excellent candidate and absolutely if Hillary hadn't put in for it and already worked for us, Dan, I'd be voting for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Opportunities, so you might hear from me again.
There you go.
We hope to. Thank you very much, Dan. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You as well. Thank you. Okay. New other old business. Mr. Fox?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't know whether this is old business or new business. There was a citizen that contacted me last year concerning a water issue that on Congammon, not kind of, excuse me, College Highway. This is a private driveway, common driveway for two people, two parties. They have a culvert system that's not functioning very well. Water was backing up because the water was coming from the Claus Anderson Road area. The DPW had applied for a grant funding to see if they could help address this issue. Yeah, and were not successful. Again, it is a private driveway. But the water issue is probably going to get worse because of the work that we have submitted and applied for for the Claus Anderson Road where we had the Lieutenant Governor and Secretary out. And when they open up and get that water flowing down towards Great Brook, this is he's going is going to exacerbate the problem for these people. I I would just like to have this carried on our agenda so that we can kind of reach out to DPW and perhaps reach out to the state to see if this wouldn't be able to be included in that engineering and and see if there isn't something that can be done because all we're doing is pushing one water problem down onto another area.
Carl, what's that called? We talked about this in light of the bridge project in Westfield, too. Something conditions, right?
Law of unintended consequences?
No, 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 no. This was a straight up. You used the term. It's a it's a technical term. With Cowell's Bridge, you taught we talked about Sunnyside and some of the work, the damage that's being done, the Sunnyside and and those roads because of the detour. And as part of the contracting for that, you said there was a term for that. Oh, never mind.
Or general conditions, general conditions.
General conditions. Maybe that's something that they should consider as part of it. If they're going to create a problem literally downstream of where they're working because of what they're doing, it would be a general condition of the project to maybe solve the issue over there. Absolutely. We could absolutely carry that.
What number on College Highway, Russ?
That's across from 320, so it'd be 350.
You'll get us the exact address.
I'll get the I'll get the exact number and names of people involved. All right, Randy probably already has all that information.
And we'll put it under old business for the future then.
Correct. That's all I'm asking.
All right. And Mr. Didi?
What?
Old business.
So this the old salt shed, I believe the 250th anniversary boat or raft, whatever that thing is, float.
Trolley.
Trolley. Ay ay ay. I believe it will fit in there according to Lieutenant Landis. There's a lean port on that white side. It's three quarters covered, so that could be a place to put that float as we are running out of time of where it's currently being stored.
Were we also looking at the fire station?
Well, that's when I thought a truck was leaving to go over to the police department to merge. But it sounds like hodgepodge bagage. None of that's happening. So that's a discussion for another day. So I think it's going to be outside, Russ. I think it's going to be in that old salt shed.
Thank you, Mr. Didi.
How are we?
Well, once winter comes, they could board that thing up because they don't need to get to the trolley, right? So we could.
They can open it up today. Yes.
Figure something out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Any other old business? Okay. New business? Do we want to cover Select Board Goals 2021 tonight? Or you want to review this list and come back next week with some reviews and changes for next week or two weeks from now?
That would be my wish, Mr. Chairman.
That would be a great idea.
Yeah, if individual members want to.
Glad you thought of it.
To me, that'd be good. We can update.
Excellent. And okay, the next is Retirement Notice from Chief Bishop. He has submitted his letter to us that when is it, June 30th, Carl? Correct of 21?
Yes, yep, one, yep, one year from June 30th. So which coincides with the expiration of his contract. And he's, you know, he put it in writing and he wants to start the you to be thinking about the recruitment process as well as what that's going to mean for staffing levels because of the net loss of one person. Historically, in the past, when we've had chiefs leave or other people, the board has looked to its reserve corps and, you know, had meetings with the reserve officers and then chosen who they want to elevate. And then that helps determine the scheduling of who would be sent to the academy so that that person would be almost finished the academy or done with the academy before the departure of the the command officer, so that we maintain our staffing levels.
Okay, well, there's one of our Select Board Goals for 20 for 2021.
Yep.
Right? We have to figure that all out. The police chief and then, you know, how all that other stuff, all the other dominoes in the conga line figure out from there.
Yeah, maybe we can bring it up in a couple of weeks and and start having a discussion over all that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. This is, I think, when we get to see how some of our hard work is kind of sort of starting to pay off as far as the bench and you know, recruitment and staff that we've brought on over the last, you know, five, eight, 10 years now, right? We're going to really start to see how that's all going to play out.
Yeah, since none of them have done anything since COVID. But yeah, that's a great idea.
On the reserve side, I mean, we, you know, the.
Yeah, we approved it, but they've literally done nothing. It's not their fault.
Correct. But we also have, yeah, and we also have one officer who's been a provisional in the interim. He was a reserve as a provisional.
True, true.
And actually, the officer that's out on leave for military leave actually called me today or yesterday just to say aye. And he's halfway done with his assignment already. So he's going to be back here in January. So the timing, maybe I'll be prescient, right? We'll have to see how that all shakes out.
Sure.
Review of part-time Board Secretary and floater rates. Carl?
That is something that Joe and I were discussing. What had happened was the budget process that you had with the cemetery in March, where we were going to restructure the pay level for the seasonal people doing the mowings so that they would be equal to the payment of the people doing the park and recreation mowing in the rail trail in the park was the $15 an hour thing. And when the chairperson, Mrs. Conley, brought up the issue during the budget meeting, she wanted to make sure that the mowers and the secretary was all taken care of under the part-time line item. So I didn't recall that and I said to Joe, so I went back and I listened to the budget tape of March 7th. And at minute number 59, she did, that was part of her request to the board. So Joe and I just, we needed to bring that back up to this board because right now, part-time board secretaries are making 1388. And by the time the state minimum wage gets adjusted this January 1st, they're going to be up to 1350 under minimum wage anyway. So this is really something that the board should look at for, you know, addressing this issue for her under this budget request that she did bring up in March and as well as across the board. Because if you're going to do something for that person in that classification, you'd be doing it for the other three or four. There's not a lot of them. There's only three to five board secretaries. And and then floaters. So that's something that Joe and I wanted to bring before the board to get some guidance on.
You're right, Carl. We're going to get if we don't do all of them next week, we're going to have another letter in front of us from another board that that probably feels a little slighted. Does this affect anyone? I mean, who else are we leaving out, Carl? Are we leaving out where the boat? I can just see how this is going to snowball. And I want to eliminate all the calls we're going to have tomorrow morning for the best we can from other boards and commissions. So.
That's exactly what you have.
Where else are we? Where are boat attendants at? Where is who else are we not taking care of that we're going to hear about?
Well, I mean.
They're just close, so that's good.
No, 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 no. I mean, no, that's a good point. I mean, you have you've got obviously some different positions. So a board secretary is, it would be the Board of Health. This one was about the cemetery one. And then you also have probably conservation. So you've you've got some people that are down around that 1388 price point where if if you're going to do this for that class, like I said, you're talking about three to five people in general. The Lake Management, 1388. And again, those dollars for that, they come from the launch fees that you already adjusted a few weeks ago.
Okay, so why don't we just let's package this whole thing up and put it on our chairman's lap. And he can quit, Mr. Steinhardt, to figure out the these numbers and where we need to be. Or Russ, you have any ideas?
Well, I, you know, all I'm going to say is I we need to do something. Carl is correct. The minimum wage is going to be being adjusted January 1st. But at the same token, I think we have to be cognitive of the fact of the fiscal situation in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and and how that's going to reflect on the town of Southwick. So I think we got to give this a lot of thought. But I I have no problem with backing your motion, Mr. Didi, of authorizing the chairman to work with the CAO to come up with a recommendation.
Was that a second, sir, to that motion?
That was a second.
I think I just got run over by a trolley.
Joe Didi, aye.
Fox, aye.
No, I think one of one abstention, I think.
I'll vote for it. We'll figure it out. What I'll do is we'll come back to the this board with a dollar amount and say this is $2,000 or three. It sounds to me like a two or three. three, it sounds to me like a $2,000 or $3,000 problem all in, but we need to figure it out exactly what that is. Sounds to me like it's about that much money.
Sure. I will do that, Doug. I'll work with Mel in accounting and we'll we'll figure that out for these three to five part-time secretaries. And then, of course, there are the other, um, floaters we bring in who who the junior one, 1326, and of course, that's not going to be uh, an acceptable number after January 1st either. So I'll have to look at the floaters, too.
Just need the number.
Yep.
Great.
Keep it under 100, Doug.
Hundred. Um, other new business? Mr. Fox?
Oh, sure.
Mr. Diddy?
I'll think of plenty after the meeting.
Exactly. Uh, just a reminder, next meeting, the high-speed internet subcommittee is coming in to give you their findings and wrap up their work.
Well, hopefully Zoom will work wonderful for that meeting.
Well, it's Comcast, you know, we you never know. Um, and, uh, Laura and I have been working and with Carl with the powers that be on some of the internet nonsense that was going on in Town Hall over the last couple of weeks. And I think they finally found the culprit. It was, uh, piece of the Channel 15 equipment was for some reason was taking out the entire town network. Um, when that thing was plugged in and trying to do something. Something that should not be able to happen was happening as it goes. But anyway, so that's the good news on that. So they found that out. Um, Carl, anything else before we adjourn?
No, I'm, uh, uh, well, we, you know, we have projects underway. We're working, but, um, as as we did in February, we had to deal with some stuff in the auditorium where we had to do some uh, equipment replacement of the projector and some other stuff that had to be upgraded, but that's all fiscal year, um, uh, 20 Channel 15 money. And then we've got some other issues we're going to be doing with the uh, the 21 money to, uh, to, to finish it off. And then we're going to be also addressing issues with my outside computer vendor under the state contract. Um, the additional stuff we have to do to start our, uh, infrastructure so that we can be in a position in the future to broadcast meetings. Um, obviously, the, uh, limitations on people being in the building still are in play. We, um, have the north side of the building open. That's been very helpful in terms of the sale of transfer station stickers. Uh, the assessor's office has been going well. Um, obviously, all of the, um, uh, real estate have been, uh, well paid up by now, but there's still a few of those that, um, maybe coming in a little late that have to be addressed. But for the most part, um, you know, uh, we continue to work with the health, uh, director. And she's, uh, giving advice to us on our operations here as well as the library operation on what they can do. And then park and recreation on the uh, gradual rollout of the services they can provide at the parks and, um, in other facilities that they operate.
Fantastic. Now I'll take that motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn, I'd just like to add because I must have gotten a half a dozen phone calls about people asking if they could get transfer station uh, stickers at Town Hall, which they can. And I see we have the press still with us, so maybe we could emphasize that, uh, they have until August 1st, but they can now safely go to Town Hall and get those transfer station stickers. And maybe Carl could reach out to, uh, the DPW and have them change their sign at the transfer station, uh, telling people they can now get their sticker at, uh, Town Hall. Thank you, Mr.
Yeah, and they can buy them online, too, Mr. Fox.
Great.
It's all opened up, right? The brush, the white metal.
Yep.
Yeah, everything. Yep. I don't have any.
How about a motion to adjourn then?
Joe Diddy will make that motion.
Fox will second it.
Great. Roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye?
Joe Diddy, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Very well. Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.